Okay, I would like to call to order a regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission, the City of Goodyear, for Wednesday, May 16th. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the minutes show that Commissioner Williams and Commissioner Vice Chairman DeBrocker are not at tonight's meeting, and the next order of business would be the administration of the loyalty oath to a new Commissioner member, Miss Leslie Miller. And I think that's our Commission Secretary who does that.
Lady, I-
There you go.
I, Leslie Miller-
I, Leslie Miller-
-do affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America-
Do affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America-
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona-
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona-
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same-
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same-
And defend them against all enemies whatever-
And defend them against all enemies whatever-
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of Planning and Zoning Commissioners-
And that I will faithfully and, I missed something-
Impartially-
And impartially. I can't find the paper. And impartially-
Discharge the duties of Planning and Zoning Commissioners-
Discharge the duties of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
According to the best of my ability-
According to the best of my ability-
So I do affirm-
So I do affirm.
All right, welcome to the Commission.
Thank you.
All right, next order of business is the minutes. I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the minutes of a regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission held on April 18th, 2008.
I move to approve the minutes from the Planning Commission meeting from April 18th, 2007.
Okay, I have a motion. Can I have a second, please? A motion from Commissioner Loretano and a second from Commissioner Lex. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, five zero. Okay, public comments. Tonight, if anybody wants to make a public comment on any of the agenda items, there are cards with the Commission Secretary. We would ask you to fill out a card, and then when either the public hearing or the regular staff, the time for public comments, we will ask you to come up and identify yourself for the record, but we also want the cards signed for our records. Thank you very much. Okay, next item is disclosure of ex parte communications. Any ex parte communications? Okay, no ex parte communications. Next order of business is the consent agenda, and ask per the City of Goodyear Planning and Zoning Commission rules and procedure, commission may by single consent motion approve any number of applications that the staff or commission have presented. First item is case 0670001, the 207th Avenue and PECO's general plan, general amendment. It's general amendment time of the year, and the staff recommends that this public hearing for this case be continued until the July 18th, 2007 Planning Commission meeting. The second order is case 06200017, Savannah Heights rezone. The public, the staff recommends that this public hearing be continued until the June 20th, 2007 Commission meeting. Does any Commissioner wish to have one of these items polled? Okay, does anyone from the public wish to have any of these items polled? In that case, I would ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as read by the Chairman.
Chairman Gelson, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, moving the cases associated with the dates, both July 18th for 0670001 and for June 20th for case 06200017.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Bay, second.
I second.
Commissioner Miller. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Any opposed? Okay, moving on. Okay, first order of all business is case 06350008, Canyon Trails Town Center, Anchor C, special use permit. The applicant is Ralph Pugh Esquire, and I will open the public hearing, and I will ask for the staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commission members. If it was acceptable to the Commission, the next two items concern Anchor C, a special use permit and a site plan. I could present that with one presentation, and then the Commission can take action separately on each item.
That is fine with the Commission.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do have the two applications. The first one is the special use permit. The second one tonight is a site plan application. And this special use permit is for a large retail user. As defined in the zoning ordinance, a large retail user is a retail use with over 100,000 square feet of floor area. And since this is a large retail user, the site plan does require review by the Planning Commission and approval from the City Council. The special use permit is for a proposed home improvement store. It'll be located on the 91-acre Canyon Trails Town Center. The Anchor C is proposed in the northern area of the town center. Surrounding uses include Canyon Trails, PAD to the north and east. That'll all be residential uses at this time. To the south of Anchor C is proposed retail development within the town center. Across Cotton Lane to the west is a mix of residential and commercial within Canyon Trails. The proposed large retail user will contain a little bit over 141,000 square feet. And that includes both the building area and the garden center. Garden center here is located to the west end of the building. Loading docks are right here, facing to the west. Storefront is all along here. Rear of the building is here. We have a few more loading areas right here, and a little bit here on the east end, which will be for lumber and such offloading. These are the building elevations for the home improvement store. Building materials, the colors, the basic design, that was pulled from the rest of the center. It does comply with the materials and colors approved for the wider Canyon Trails Town And this here is just a little bit of perspective view of that storefront. We had a neighborhood meeting held on March 1st. We had several people from the surrounding residential area attend. No opposition to the special use permit was voiced at the meeting. To date, staff has not received any opposition to this special use permit. With our review, we find that the proposed special use permit will be compatible with the surrounding area, including the surrounding residential areas. We find that the site plan does comply with the city's development and design standards. As such, staff is recommending approval of the special use permit subject to 13 stipulations. We're also recommending approval of the site plan subject to 14 stipulations. With that, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report. Staff's available for comments. Mr. Shawn Lake is here standing in for Mr. Ralph Pugh. We also have representatives from the home improvement store here as well.
Okay. Questions of staff?
Chairman Gelson.
Commissioner Bay.
Only one question. I noticed through this particular site plan that it looked like there were some, I don't want to say half-street improvements, but into the facility itself, it looks like there is an ingress improvement that's a component of this particular site. And since the remainder of the site is not a part of this case, I guess the question I have is, are we doing any sort of traffic mitigations for ingress and egress out of the site for that particular interest on Canyon Trails Boulevard?
I don't know if this answers the question.
Go further. I don't quite see the street there. It's clipped off.
This is the phasing plan for the center. And this Anchor C is second phase. What we'll have is the driveways in blue constructed with the first phase, providing several access points to the center, efficient access, cross-access. This drive and this drive out to Canyon Trails Boulevard will be as part of this first phase. That's the truck circulation and such. It helps with the movement. So the only thing really with this Anchor C that they're showing as the second phase is some parking area in the building itself. The drives look like they're all constructed at the first phase.
Well, according to this presentation provided in yellow, Phase Two actually does provide for the development of a pass-through into the facility itself and to other stores as well. So are we just looking at this one component of Phase Two, and that then will not, well that has to then include the ingress and egress into the facility itself? Is that a horrible question? Let me rephrase it. Okay, so with this particular phase, and we look at, let me just make sure I state this properly, we're looking at Anchor C as a separate part, and as part of that anchor, there is no, it looks like maybe a half-street improvement associated directly with the home store that's going in right there. And so it also provides for an entryway into the overall development. And so my question is, since only half of it is in this component of Anchor C, will the remainder of it be built as a part of it so that you have a complete ingress/egress into the facility? That's really the question is.
Okay. So it's this area here?
No.
The half-street improvement?
No. I'm talking about actually going into the facility in the front.
Right here?
Yeah, right there. Keep going, keep going the wrong way. There you go.
Right there. There you go.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Bay, if I could help?
Yes.
I think you're referencing relative to the site plan hard copy where it shows that it was apparently a half driveway improvement.
Exactly.
That line is representative of the parcel line for sale to Home Depot from Canyon Trails.
Okay.
It's not representative of what's going to be improved at one time.
Okay.
As indicated on the phasing diagram, the full driveway would be improved in Phase Two, in yellow.
Okay, and is this not a part of Phase Two? I guess that's-
It is a part of Phase Two. In blue, the Phase One, there's actually a full driveway on the Canyon Trails-
Okay.
-that will take access to the backside in the rest of the blue area.
Okay. All right.
So there won't be any time a half driveway improved. There'll be a full driveway when it is.
Full improvement. Okay, thank you. Sorry. Thank you.
Are there questions of staff?
I have a couple. I understand to the north of this, on north of Canyon Trails Boulevard, there will be courthouse, which is basically, the drawing right now north is facing to the left side of what we're showing on the video monitors. Do we have any kind of screen wall behind the Anchor C? I mean, I know we have a big screen wall that runs all along the drainage canal, but the question I have is, do we have anything there, or is that just the back of this building is going to be open to Canyon Trails Boulevard?
Mr. Chairman, Commission members, it's probably tough to see at this scale, but we do have an eight-foot-high wall, kind of.
Thank you. Answered that question. Okay, next question I have is, at the west, excuse me, the east end of the building, there is a secondary area for lumber, which I think you have up at the corner, and then there it looks like a trash compact area. Is that what I'm seeing there? The one with the X across through the center of it, next to the pretty decorative streets.
This area?
Yes, exactly. Is that where trash is going?
Mr. Chairman, Commission members, that is the lumber offload area. Those gates or the doors-
Okay.
-where they will pull in, pull out, well, take the material inside. There is also, applicants can correct me if I'm wrong, there's tool rental. Some of these areas here are for that use, wash downs and such.
Is that going to have any kind of covering or patio or pavilion type effect, or is it just going to be open air? Okay.
This is that area right here. This would be for the lumber offloading, and this area right here is where that X was that you had pointed out, where they would do some of their tool rental operations.
And then the drive-through is in the front of the building. Is that the way I'm looking at this?
Right here?
Yeah.
Yes.
Correct. Okay. All right. I'm done. Any other questions of staff? Would the applicant like to come up and make his presentation, and then we'll have questions of the applicant?
Chairman, Commission members, my name is Shawn Lake, 1930 East Brown Road, Mesa, Arizona, here on behalf of Vestar. I'd like to say it's a pleasure to be here, but I wore my orange shirt tonight, because I think a lot of us would rather be or watching a Suns game tonight, but maybe we'll get to see the box score. But it is a pleasure to be here on behalf of this project. This is a really exciting project, and we know this is one that the city has been working with Vestar for many, many years, and it's something that's going to be coming out of the ground, and we're very excited about it happening. The portion that we are here to talk about tonight is just this portion that was highlighted in yellow on your book, the special use permit for a large retail user, which your staff has identified as approximately 140,000 square feet, and also dealing with the site plan for that area. And so, staff has done an excellent job. Let me just kind of go over a few things related, and I'll keep my presentation brief. We've also got here tonight a representative of the user who can address specific issues as it relates to operational issues. Where is the trash compa-, you know, different questions that you seem to have, that they would be much more knowledgeable as to that. But we represent, I represent Vestar, and I'll deal with the site plan issues. Let me just get right on the record. We support staff's recommendation for approval in this case. We agree with staff's conditions of approval for both staff reports, for the SUP and the site plan. There really is only one issue to address here tonight that I will briefly discuss, and then Mr. McCoy will go into more detail. On the SUP is condition number six, and then on the site plan, you will see, site plan application, you'll see an identical condition, number five, and this deals with delivery hours. We would like to have that condition removed. We support the user who would like to have that. We think the orientation of this building is such that it will already take care of mitigation. The docks are pointed towards the future freeway as it comes through here, but again, Scott, Mr. McCoy can address specific issues on that. So we would support the end user on that in removing those conditions. Other than that, we agree with the rest of staff's recommendation. They've really done a very good job of reviewing this site plan and working with us through the whole process. The elevations are not something that just happened, but it was kind of an end of many, 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 many months of design through the whole center, and so we think it's really turned out well, and at the end of the day, will be a nice project. So with that, I'll cut my presentation short and be happy to answer questions, some that I may be able to address, or others more specific to the user operational issues would be Mr. McCoy.
Do members of the Commission have questions for Mr. Lake? Did I get that right?
Yes.
Not Mr. McCoy yet, right?
No, not Mr. McCoy.
No, wait.
We'll wait. Mr. Bay, Commissioner Bay, Commissioner?
Thank you very much.
Bring Mr. McCoy up.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the Commission. For your record, my name is Scott McCoy. I work at 3101 North Central with Earl Curling Lagard, and I represent the end user, which is not a mystery. Home Depot, you probably, when you looked at the elevations, that elevation to storefront looked familiar to you. Mr. Lake is correct in that we, as the end user, have just small concern about the delivery hours. To provide a little bit of background to you, we've been working with Vestar, the developer of the site, over the last several months to acquire this property, and at some point along the way, the issue of delivery hours came up. And remember, many of you were on this commission back when you approved the original Canyon Trails PAD, and there was a stipulation, a similar stipulation, in the Canyon Trails PAD and the rezoning case on this property that dealt specifically with Target and the majors A through G that were to the east of the development. And in that particular instance, you, the stipulation that you imposed was that you limited the hours of delivery for the Target store and those majors between the hours of 6:00 and 10:00, and you excluded perishable goods. And so Target and the other users that are along the eastern edge of the site still can receive deliveries after 10:00 PM, just of perishable goods. The remainder of the Canyon Trails PAD was unstipulated with respect to delivery hours. So when we began, Home Depot began to look at this site and this project, and we saw that the zoning had occurred, and it was our hope or intention to have unlimited delivery hours. Why that's important to Home Depot and why we're different than some of the other users really is an operational characteristic of Home Depot. I think we've all been to the Home Depot stores, and if you have been inside a Home Depot store, you realize that there is absolutely no storage or warehouse or back room or storeroom or whatever you want to call it. There's a very small area where Home Depot employees can stage products as they come into the store, and then they're immediately brought into the store and warehouse, so to speak, in the racking system that Home Depot uses. So our ability to store product behind the store is very limited. What that means is the stipulation that is in both the SUP case and in the site plan is that you've stipulated or asked that we limit deliveries between 6:00 and 10:00. Home Depot opens their store at 5:30 in the morning and does a pretty fair trade contractors in the morning, and then things slack off a little bit, and then things pick up again in the evening. The issue for Home Depot operationally is that it's difficult to serve your customers when you're limited to deliveries during store hours. We've all been in a Home Depot where you turn the corner to go down an aisle and it's blocked off, and the reason we block that off is to allow the stocking of the products directly from the truck into the rack system. So that's an operational characteristic that I think is somewhat unique to Home Depot and not the case with other large retail users. Some, I think, important considerations, and Chairman, you mentioned the property to the north and that the courthouse sort of product that's in, and I understand from planning staff that there's actually an application that's been submitted for a rezoning of that property to the north to a more commercial mixed-use product, and I know that yet hasn't been approved and hasn't gone through the process, but in the event that that happens, coupled with the way that the Home Depot is oriented, and I have a graphic here that might be helpful. You asked about the screening of the site to the north, and there is a proposed eight-foot screen wall, it's the CMU wall. In addition, as you can see right here, this is the loading area, and that's a loading well, so the semi-trucks would actually back up into that loading well, and it's depressed. There's a 10-foot screen wall there. In addition, in the stipulations you've asked that we provide along our northern boundary, enhanced landscaping, and I think the requirement is 24-inch box trees every 10 feet, which is more significant, I think, landscaping efforts than you require typically. In addition to that, we have 142-foot distance between the loading, the 10-foot loading wall in the back of the store to the northern right-of-way line for Canyon Trails Boulevard. And then even if the courthouse home product was proposed, we anticipate that there would be parking up against what is now Canyon Trails Boulevard, which is a collector street for the city. So for those reasons, we think it's important that these stipulations, at least with respect to delivery hours, be removed. Again, I'll remind you that the rest of Canyon Trails PAD site, with the exception of Target and majors A through G, have no stipulation with respect to delivery hours, and deliveries can occur beyond 10:00 PM for perishable goods. And then my final remark is this, and many folks don't know this, but on average, and we run lots of Home Depot stores throughout the state of Arizona, and we know what our delivery schedules like, there are less than 10 semi-deliveries per day to a Home Depot. So we're not talking about a significant amount of truck traffic to begin with. So I'd be more than happy to answer any questions we'd ask of you. Just remove those two stipulations from the special use permit and the site plan approval.
Questions of Mr. McCoy.
Mr. Loretto. Sorry.
Well, my question, when you answered part of it, what are the hours of Home Depot? I didn't know if it's going to be a 24-hour store or what your hours were going to be.
Typically, the Home Depots throughout the valley open at 5:30 in the morning, and that's for obvious reasons in the summertime to try to allow contractors and folks to get in and out and get their business done before it gets too hot. And then depending on the store location, we haven't really affirmed up the closing time, but it's typically between 9:00 and 10:00, but it is not a 24-hour operation in terms of opening.
And what would you propose as an acceptable time? Because I don't know when your deliveries are. What would you propose as a timeframe?
Well, our preference would be an unlimited timeframe. Just so you understand, we use a variety of freight haulers that we don't control for about half of our deliveries. The other half of our deliveries are Home Depot-controlled employees, and we can dictate to them when they come on the site and what they do when they're on the site. And so our hope would be 24 hours. We also have the ability to, at the front of the store, we have at the garden center a roll-up door, and we also have roll-up doors in the front of the store. We can accept some deliveries through the front of the store if that becomes a big issue for the Commission in terms of where we do the deliveries.
And then my second question, are you planning to post property no trespassing like the one in Appendale's been posted?
And I think I know what you're getting at, absolutely. We've worked very, very hard to try to eliminate the issues that are associated with unwanted invitees, for lack of a better term, and so we worked very, very hard to keep that from happening.
I just wondered, with a congregation of people in that general area, with homes being so close, if this can be posted? That's my questions.
Mr. Commissioner Bay?
I'd like to follow up with Commissioner Loretto's question. You noted that your stores would close between 9:00 and 10:00. That was basically your operation, but you said that you wanted deliveries 24 hours. Could you clarify for me, are you saying that you would have deliveries from 10:00 PM till 5:30 in the morning? Is that the typical operation? Maybe if you explained your operation, it'd be helpful.
Half of our daily deliveries occur during the normal business hours for a typical Home Depot. So roughly five to six trucks during business hours. We anticipate between four and five trucks to deliver sometime between the hours of 10 and 6:00 o'clock in the morning. And so what we're asking for, and it's important that we allow deliveries to occur after 10:00. And so what we're asking for, and it's important that we allow deliveries to occur after 10:00 p.m. because that's, the store's closed, we can better serve our customers, we can move the product inside the store without worrying about running people down with a fork truck or issues associated with that. So that's our concern.
So operationally, you do most of your stocking after your doors are closed?
I would say it's more, we're breaking down product, moving from, if you go into a Home Depot, you'll see that at the top of the rack, that's where the large number of products are stacked. And at night, we'll pull those products down, restock the lower shelves, but also bring deliveries in and move directly from the truck right into the racking system and not have to worry about customers being in the store.
Okay. Commissioner Miller?
Well, given that I'm brand new, I just have a question, so I don't know if, but I don't know.
Ask away.
Not of this gentleman. My question would be, he's not the only home improvement store in the Goodyear area, is that correct?
Sure.
So my question is, what are the hours of?
That would be a question to staff.
What are the hours of the other home improvement? And do they have?
May I rephrase your question?
Sure.
We have another home, a couple of home improvement. Do we have any restrictions on deliveries that we have done in recent times with any of these entities that we've approved in the last five or six years?
Mr. Chairman, the other Lowes and other home delivery, home improvement stores were developed prior to the city's adoption of this large retail user ordinance, so they did not have to have a special use permit. So therefore, there was not, unless established by prior zoning, there was no stipulations regulating hours of operation for deliveries for trash pickup. This only comes out as a result of the commission's ability with the new ordinance to review large retail users because of their nature and to attach such stipulations as you deem necessary to provide compatibility.
Mr. Coons brought up an important point. We have no issue with respect to the refuse collection in the times that are stipulated in the staff reports. We're not at all concerned about that, and we think that that's appropriate. It just really has to do with deliveries and the operational characteristics of the Home Depot. They're truly unique.
Any other questions?
No.
Mr. Lax?
I have a question of staff. If we were to offer a revised stipulation of deliveries from 5:30 in the morning until 12:00 midnight, due to the operational circumstances of this, would we be setting a precedent that we should not be setting concerning Target? I mean, we allow Target to do certain things, we allow Home Depot to do certain things, we allow Walmart to do certain things because of the big box ordinance. Where is staff on something like that?
Mr. Chairman, commission members, this stipulation on the delivery curfew basically was modeled from Walmart, which was then, we modeled it then for the Super Target, which is then used here. And basically, like Mr. Coons said, Lowes maybe doesn't have a curfew because there's no residential behind it. This is a protection, this is a stipulation that staff has used with Walmart, with Super Target. So we're, for consistency's sake, we're using the same time with Home Depot.
Mr. Chairman, if I could add, you know, an answer to your question, that each cases is unique and should be evaluated on basis. You would not be setting a precedent that you should be concerned about because each large retail user has individual characteristics, individual locations, that your responsibility is to evaluate and whether or not there are conditions that should be attached or not attached to meet the requirements of the ordinance for a large retail user. It's at the commission's discretion, but you should evaluate based upon, is this site different, location different than the Target and different than the Walmart? And in some cases, it is.
Okay. Mr. Lake, would you like to make a comment or answer a question?
I don't, she probably.
I have a question, because I'm still about, you said there might be 10 trucks that we're talking about during this time, and they're coming in from all different places. If you're not open to deliver, where do the trucks go?
Well, they're not allowed.
And they just sit there?
Well, no, I think that you have a stipulation that trucks aren't allowed to park overnight on the property and to idle their engines. And we don't allow trucks to sit in our parking lots and sit overnight. So they'd have to go somewhere else, and I'm not quite sure where they'd go. I mean, I think it's a good point.
Yank J.
Right? You don't want to put that off on another site or another project. I also want to remind you, and you all know this, but you also have a noise ordinance. And so if, for whatever reason, you agreed to modify the stipulation and things get out of hand or there's complaints, you do have a noise ordinance available to you that you could certainly enforce against the user. And then finally, it was just brought to my attention, and it's a coincidence how things work out, but the representative of the property owner to the north of us indicated to me just now that they really don't have an intention to build a residential court home project to the north of the site. And so they support the site plan and our request.
Mr. Lake, did you want to make a comment?
Yeah, I was just going to point that out and say something very similar, that the property owner that owns the site we're here talking about today is the same property who owns the property that in theory this would be protecting. So they have no problem with not having these conditions, number five and number six, because they own both properties and they're not concerned about it. They have an intent to do something different. But also, I wanted to point out, I'm trying to remember, but I was part of that Walmart discussion when we first had that one, if you remember, many years ago. And I hate to bring up that, but if you remember, a lot of the concern dealt with that dock that was oriented towards or opened towards the residential users directly to the west. And that creates a problem because you really don't have a mechanism to screen as that noise travels, where in this instance, we have the docks that are oriented or screened. So the docks are this way and face towards Cotton Lane or the future freeway. And so you already have a built-in mechanism to screen or protect whatever, be it office, be it commercial, or whatever goes into the north with this 10-foot screen wall that is located on this blue line. You would then also have the perimeter screen wall as well as the distance. And so I think these instances are unique and different than what you have seen in other cases, and does not set a precedent because they have done a good job of effectively screening and mitigating those concerns. And so we think because of those mitigation measures and because we're so unique, that removing condition five and number six in this instance would be warranted, and so we would request that. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anybody else from the public, before I close the public hearing, that would like to make a comment on this case? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing, and now we will have commission discussion. Would anybody like to start off on where they, other than step five on the large retail user and step six on the special use permit, are there any concerns by the commission? Seeing none, let's, can we talk about step five and step six?
I'm fine with removing them, to be honest with you, because of the character of Home Depot. And once you're talking about midnight to 5:00 in the morning, you're pretty much, it doesn't back against any residential, there's a freeway there. I don't think we're talking about a lot of trucks when we do have Target going in there at any time anyway with perishable items. So I do not have a problem removing those two. And then, like you said, if there's a noise ordinance problem, then take care of it that way. But it doesn't look like, to me, it's going to back up against any residential law.
Commissioner Baye?
I have to agree, there was really no residential issues associated with having the deliveries there. However, I think that we should be cautious and be still consider that we still don't know what's going to get built to the north and maybe take that into consideration when removing the stipulation. My thought would be that maybe if we have this sort of stipulation, maybe we request that there's some sort of limitation, maybe number of trucks, or some sort of monitoring that would occur on behalf of the operator so that we could mitigate any future potential homes that may be there. So that's my, that's it.
Commissioner Miller?
Well, I don't see any problem, and I wouldn't like to see one entity have, in terms of restraint of trade and making it less competitive than any other retailer competitor. So for us to change the hours, it would make it competitive. And so I'm, I'm for supportive.
Mr. Lax?
Okay, I still have some concerns with this, and where I was basically taking this and I was hoping that my fellow commissioners would support me on that is that I would be more than happy to allow deliveries from 5:30 in the morning until midnight. I, you know, I don't know, I agree with Commissioner Baye, I don't know, while the applicant who owns the land says they're going to, instead of build court homes, they're going to build retail, well, we don't know whether the market will sustain that amount of retail because you have very large town center here right of way. And across the street, there is, there are, you know, homes that are built as part of Canyon Trails. So, you know, if I can get support from my fellow commissioners, I would be proposing that stipulation, you know, five and stipulation six be 5:30 to midnight. And I think that gives us some sort of a compromise. It allows the store to have, you know, two to three hours of non-public time where they can actually schedule the deliveries. I just really, at 3:00 in the morning when a truck is backing up and you're hearing that beep, 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 and you're trying to sleep, I just get real hipset with it. And I think the neighbors would also. My other comment is, and I'll address this to Commissioner Miller, while the other stores in this development do not have restrictions on hours, they actually do have restrictions because they won't take a delivery, other than a major will not take a delivery when they're not open. So, you know, so in essence, the only people that are really going to wind up having, you know, late-night deliveries are these large anchors that come in with big truckloads of stuff. Enough said. If there, is there any other commission comments or whatever? If, in that case, our first case is the special use permit, and that is case 063500008. And I would like to ask for a motion from one of my commissioners, please.
Do they do that? Did I get that in the right order?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend approval of case 06-350-00008 with the stipulation number six deleted.
Okay, I have a motion.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries four to one. My reason, again, is I believe there should be some restriction on this center for delivery and especially between the hours of midnight and 5:30 or 5:30 in the morning. That being said, it's approved. Moving on to, I'm going to open a, I'm going to do this by the book. We will open a public hearing on case number 06620009, which is the site plan approval for a large retail user anchor C to be developed on the 13 acres in Canyon Trails Town Center. We have had the staff, it's open, we've had the staff presentation, we've had the applicant presentation. I'm going to ask if there's any other public comments that wish to be made. Seeing none, I'm closing the public hearing, and we'll have commission discussion. Is there anybody in the commission that would like to discuss anything? Okay, again, I am, I will probably be voting against this due to the stip, you know, I'm assuming that the motion will be to remove stipulation five, and I will not be supporting it. So now I'll ask for a motion.
Who picked it?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend approval of case 06-620-00009 with stipulation number five eliminated.
All right, I have a motion.
Second.
And I have a motion from Commissioner Lax and a second from Commissioner Loritano. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ice habit, four to one. Thank you very much. And again, my reason is, I think we should have some slight restriction between the hours of midnight and 6:00 in the morning. Thank you. All right, let me get the agenda, moving right along here. All right, case number 07200002, Amaranth Preliminary Planned Area Development Rezone. I'm going to open the public hearing, and I'm going to ask for the staff presentation.
Chairman Gelzer, members of the commission? This is a request for preliminary planned area development zoning for 8,875 acres in the Sonoran Valley area. And I'd just like to note that the agenda had stated it was 8,518 acres, which is incorrect. Earlier this year, a general plan amendment was approved for the entire Sonoran Valley area. And commission has also already seen a final P A D for area one, for this area. As you can see here, this entire area is what the general plan area was for, but the area in red is the Montage Holdings properties, which is what is up for the preliminary planning, planned area development zoning tonight. And then on the other one. Everything in purple on this map is Montage Holdings properties, which is included in the preliminary P A D zoning application, except for this area right here, which is the original 690 acres, which already received final P A D zoning earlier this year. The preliminary P A D classifies 11 planning areas, which includes six residential villages, a downtown village, a regional center village, and three employment center planning areas. These village areas include a village center with commercial-type uses and a mix of residential uses surrounding them. And again, this is just another exhibit of the planning area villages. And again, this is the original 690 acres, which has already received final P A D zoning. And tonight, we're looking at preliminary zoning for the rest of the area in the dark This is, just to clarify, this is preliminary P A D zoning. The original 690 was final P A D zoning, which as you can see, it was much more detailed. Each village will in the future be coming in for final P A D zoning, and at that time, they'll come to us with a conceptual lotting plan, which will provide us with those details that you saw in your 690 P A D zoning. At this time, we're just seeing the basic land use classifications. However, the P A D does identify the potential build-out of dwelling units, retail, and employment space, and the provision of public facilities. The baseline dwelling units for this area allows for 32,842 units or a density of 3.43 dwelling units per acre. The Mac, and the general plan amendment gives them this baseline density. The maximum multiplier they could have is 53,158 units, which is a density of 5.56 dwelling units per acre. In order to reach those higher densities, they would have to provide enhanced public facilities, amenities, or innovative architecture or subdivision design. With this preliminary P A D zoning, the applicant is requesting authorization to utilize the midpoint multiplier, which would allow them to build 42,476 dwelling units, which is a density of 4.31. a density of 4.31 dwelling units per acre. Stipulation 15 in the preliminary PAD staff report addresses the authorization of this midpoint density. We would, staff would like to recommend alternative language for the stipulation, just to make it more clear that the applicant is authorized that 42,476 dwelling units, and also to explain that in order to receive that baseline density, the future final PADs will have to conform to this preliminary PAD. And at that time, commissioner counsel will determine that the final PAD is in conformance with the innovative architecture and enhanced public facilities that are being proposed in this PAD booklet. And I would like to read the draft language. Future final PADs for the Amaranth community will be authorized to utilize the residential densities defined in table 4.1 in this preliminary PAD, with a community total of 42,476 dwelling units. To the extent that the community and neighborhood character of each final PAD is consistent with the framework in this Amaranth preliminary PAD, and includes innovative and diverse architectural and subdivision design features, defined neighborhood and community identity elements, significant landscape treatments, quality park and usable open space areas, and enhanced public facilities and amenities as set forth in section 2.3.5 of the city general plan and article 3-5 of the city zoning ordinance. The determination of compliance with these design objectives for the authorized density shall be by the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council in the review, evaluation, and approval of each final PAD application. I'd like to conclude my presentation at this time to give the commission an opportunity to ask questions, and the applicant is also here to answer any questions he might have.
Questions of staff?
Commissioner Lacks? Just as a grammatical thing, the last word should be application, with applications.
Okay.
Commissioner Bay?
Well, actually, no, it should be applications because there's not gonna be one final PAD
that comes forward in the future. There's one preliminary PAD, but as we talked about the village concept, each area is gonna be coming in at different times and different phasing for their final zoning, if that makes sense.
Well, right, but you used each.
Oh, I see, okay. I'm sorry, I apologize.
Right, no, I mean, I understood there would be more than one, just, I mean, or you could change each to the.
Commissioner Lacks is correct.
No, no, I understand, thank you.
Commissioner Bay? Just like a point of clarification, the numbers used here is 42,476 dwellings. When I look at the midpoint multiplier provided in the staff report, it's 41,196. And looking into the actual master plan PAD, that multiplier agrees with that number at 41,196. So there's a discrepancy here of about 1,300 properties, and maybe you could help me discover where they are.
Thank you. Yes, you're right, I should have pointed that out, I'm sorry. The figure has been updated, the 42,476 figure is the correct figure. The preliminary PAD booklet has been updated and staff is in receipt of that updated copy, but we weren't able to get it to the commission in time. And the staff report that one chart hadn't been changed to reflect that.
That's good, that's good. Long as we know we're there.
Any other questions of staff? I have a comment that I would like to bring up. I do not, if you would like to answer it at this time, but the question is both for you and for the applicant. And my comment is as follows. I was a member of the general plan update committee in 2002 and 2003, and I believe Commissioner Bay was, and I believe Commissioner Lacks was. And some of the staff and some of the applicants' representatives are all here and know where I'm going with this. We tried to come up with an idea and a way of awarding people more than the baseline amount of houses. So, previous to that, every parcel that was three to five housing units came in at 3.76 houses per acre, and that number was the standard and that was the de facto standard. When we changed the ranges of the housing, we wound up going to, the applicant is allowed whatever the base is. And as a result of that, through enhancements, through other defined things, we have basically granted increased density. This is the first case since the general plan amendment that you're asking this commission to grant a midpoint density without any assurances or without any demonstration that any of these amenities or special circumstances are being delivered. And so, if you would like to answer that now, that's fine. If you would like to leave the question out for the applicant or for some of the staff people who are here that I know served on that committee or worked on that committee, I'd be happy to answer it. But I have some serious concerns about this, and I'm not seeing any reason why we should go above, you know, 30, basically 33,000 households, because the applicant is basically saying they're gonna deliver this.
Mr. Chairman, if I.
Mr. Planning Manager, Mr. Coons.
A couple of points, and I appreciate your comments and observation because you're correct. A couple of uniqueness in regards to this application. First, I want to remind ourselves, because staff also struggled with this question and evaluate this issue prior to bringing this forward to you in terms of our position and the plan itself. First, this is a preliminary PAD, which is the, most of the time you'll see, you'll jump to a final PAD where, once a final PAD is approved, this commission does not see any further developments until you see a subdivision. But this is a preliminary PAD, and there's a second step in this where we'll see individual final PADs in a similar manner as you saw the area one final PAD for the 690. Second, in the staff's review of this preliminary PAD, we felt that by the overall character of this master plan community with its village concepts, its core, some of those overall design elements that are built into this master plan, that it earned its way to a certain degree beyond the base, just because it is not just like any other master plan community that's been done before. And that their focus is on urban cores, neighborhood character, village character, and those things from a planning standpoint that we encourage. So that took us above what we would traditionally look at the target without them showing anything further, and you're correct. We ultimately decided that, we felt that in this particular case, that we were comfortable enough to go with this, recommending this request with the stipulation emphasizing that those additional innovative and quality features of a planned area development that we feel confident that they will include in future PADs, but emphasize it by a stipulation that that showing and that compliance is still to be done at the time of each final PAD. So you're correct, we saw this as a little bit of a unique application, enough where we would go beyond, to some degree, what our normal procedures would be.
Thank you. Do you have anything else, Kate?
I don't.
Okay, I'd like to invite the applicant up to make presentations, or anybody that is his representative.
Thank you, Chair, Chairman Gelsner and, Chairman Gelsner and planning commissioners. My name is Joe Porter, I'm with Montage Holdings, 6720 Scottsdale Road in Scottsdale. Thank you very much.
Excellent.
Thank you. And thank you all for poring through this and sticking with us through this process that we've been through. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I think you've already asked one.
I've asked it, you know.
Yes, yes. It's an excellent question, and it's one that we've talked to staff a lot about, it's one that we've struggled with. And the uniqueness is that this 4,200 some odd units is what we are all striving for. A preliminary PAD, in the way we've done it, establishes a vision for the future, what we expect to achieve, establishes a set of principles for how to get there, and it is what we are aspiring for. Quite often in the past, zoning has kind of established the lowest, the minimum standard. Okay, so, so people have, people have, actually, there's been a tendency to keep densities low. What we're saying here is this is a satellite town within the city of Goodyear. There's a trend in this country to higher densities, back to, people call it new urbanism. If you're old enough, it's old urbanism, okay? So from my generation, we're back to old urbanism. It's higher densities, it's the kind of things that I've heard you all struggle with when you approve commercial developments. It's a trend for the future and it's a trend to maximize opportunities. I've encouraged the staff to identify what we're aspiring for. And when we did the first 690 acres, we kind of ignored everything, and we did a plan that we thought at this point in time was a good first step for that trend, and that's how the units came out, and then that's what we came to you with. So now we're going on to the next phase, and I think it's important for us to collectively tell everybody what we're aspiring for, because there are a lot of doubters out there, okay? We need to, we need to explain what we're doing to ADON. We need to explain what we're doing to MAG. All of our trip generation numbers and our wastewater treatment numbers and all of the things that we're investing in infrastructure for is for 4,200 plus. We hope by the time this is all finished and we have an urban town center, that we can earn the top number. But, you know, we have to, we have to convince our partners, we, for our partners and our investors, we're after 42,000. For the citizen on the street needs to understand what this is gonna be, and the person who's interested in growth paying its own way has to know that we're after a new kind of place that doesn't necessarily exist in the Phoenix metropolitan region. So it's very important that we collectively say what we're after, and, and, by the way, we're both gonna have to earn it, the city and the developer. We're gonna have to earn this density, and we will, and we want to state what the target is so everybody knows it. And frankly, if we don't meet it, the site won't accommodate 42,000 units. I mean, if it's business as usual development, those densities won't be achievable, you know? And the things that we're bringing to it in this document is, is a fundamental structure with a town center and villages and neighborhoods that are based on the way we think people are gonna wanna live in the future and the way they've wanted to live in the past. We're building an infrastructure that is designed to be resource conserving, water conserving, we're gonna make some strong innovations there. We're investing in education more than developers typically invest in education, we're committed to that. We are, oh, by the way, we also have to communicate this to the builders, because the builders are skeptical that this can be done. And we will sell it to them, but they need to know where we're going, all right? So anyway, we've got the parks and open space system, a walkable community, very important. We've got land there for jobs, and we will have an economic development program and bring jobs to it. And then this issue of regional transportation, the connection to Goodyear, and then the enormous energy that we're going to put in to moving with other developers in the corridor, moving the Loop 303 along. Those are all things that deserve a statement of what we're all collectively aspiring to achieve, okay? And that's the reason to make that statement. That doesn't, that doesn't let us duck the responsibility of earning it. All right, so that's, Chairman Gelsner, been the logic and.
Any other, any questions of Mr. Porter?
I think I have a question of staff, actually, and not to take anything away from, but the conversation has been mid-range into our densities, and what I just heard from Joe was that it also requires that the infrastructure is built to that capacity. So, two things come to mind. One is, is if we were to build at a lower capacity and then aspire for that higher capacity down the road, then the infrastructure then would have to be increased and expanded, and that would be at, not just an additional cost, but at a dis, convenience for citizenry. So my question to staff is, if we look at these capacities at the mid-range, does that require in the design of infrastructure, larger pipes, larger streets, those types of things, does that equate to that?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Bay, as I understand the preparation of this preliminary PAD, the infrastructure requirements, water, sewer, things of that nature, are all been preliminary design based upon the dwelling unit counts at the midpoint density range of 42,000. So, to, in its essence, to approve less at this time is undersizing that. Is that responding to your question?
Yeah, that's exactly where I was going with that. And to me, that sounds like a benefit, regardless of whether you need those numbers or not, you could have the infrastructure in place at some point, which would mean that you would not have to go back and resize pipes and town streets and those types of things. So, thank you, I appreciate that. That definitely is.
Other questions? Questions of Mr. Porter, anyone? Does anybody else would like to make comments on this? Could you come up, please? Have you filled out a speaker card? Would you fill one out and come up anyway and state your name and address?
I'll come up first.
Come up and do your thing, and then we'll get you to do the paperwork afterwards. Please, your name and address.
My name is Mark Pelletier, I live at 15742 West Fairmount in Goodyear. I apologize for my casual appearance, it had not been my intention to address the committee. I'm a strict layman here, came as an observer. My thoughts though are that, it's my understanding that the developer came to the city of Goodyear and asked, I'll simplify it, I'm sure it wasn't this simple or cut and dry, but to be included in next end of the city so that he and the city could participate in starting with a clean slate in an area that has absolutely no development now, and, you know, to start from ground zero and to do it right. And again, I apologize for my lack of detail understanding here, but it seems to me that what's being asked for is that we allow a density which requires some special things, special architecture, innovative features, et cetera. And it seems to me that, starting from a clean slate, granting something that is above the norm and requires extra, and the petitioner himself has said, requires selling to his builders, et cetera, et cetera. Sounds like a bad start to the project to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, any other public comments? Mr. Porter, I'm gonna take it on. Mr. Porter, I'm going to take it on my, as the chairman, I would like to ask you some questions, and I'm assuming that I'll get some yes and no answers. If we are to approve this at the requested density of 42,476, do I have your assurance on the record and the assurance of your successors that you will have defined neighborhoods and community identifying elements?
Yes.
Do I have your assurance?
Wait, I'm sorry, Chairman Gelsner. My successors, to the extent they're in the room, I don't...
Well, if your successors would like to come up and speak on this behalf, that's fine, too.
Okay. Well, I know it did, but...
Okay. And do I understand that this development, and you and your successors will build, would insist on significant landscape treatments in this development?
Yes.
And do I understand that quality parks and usable open space areas will be provided?
Yes.
And last but not least, enhanced public facilities and amenities will be provided?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we are on the record, because while real estate transactions and development agreements all are based on the written word and the signed word, if you don't live up to this agreement, we are going to be replaying this for you and your successors. So thank you very much. And I will not stand against this, but I have some serious concerns about bumping, going from the minimum, as a person who really struggles with the general plan, to going to granting you the midpoint, and that is why I specifically ask these questions.
Yes, and I have seen people come before you who didn't do what they say they were going to do, and I understand what you're talking about.
Okay. Just remember that if, I want you to remember that when the individual final PADs come, and these, you know, we're expecting to see these, otherwise you will go back to the base of what you earn, and we'll work it back up from there.
Sure, absolutely.
So I want to convey that to you very emphatically on the record, that this is what is going to happen.
Absolutely. And I might say that we're asking for this approach, not totally starting from scratch, because we all already have brought to you a final PAD that provided what we've just been talking about.
I wholeheartedly understand. I mean, I've seen the final PAD on the 690 on part Phase 1, and we're going to see the final PAD moment shortly on Phase 2. And we, and I'm speaking for my fellow commissioners, those who are here and those who are not here, and I can surely say that I, you know, I won't say I can speak for council, but I can tell you their intentions. This is a major project. This is something the city has really bitten off a big chunk of obligation, because the land is now in the city of Goodyear, and we have, you have to deliver, and we have to deliver. And we expect you to deliver, and if you don't deliver, you'll go back to the minimums.
We look forward to delivering.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing on this matter and ask for a, is there any commission discussion? Okay. I am going to ask for a motion on case number 072000002 with a revised stipulation number 15 as read into the report by our staff personnel.
Chairman Gelsner? I'd like to make a motion that we approve case number 0720000002 and include the revisions as so read by the chairman of stipulation 15 within this recommendation.
I have a motion. Do you have a second, please?
Second.
Second from, a motion from Commissioner Bay and a second from Commissioner Lax. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, 5-0.
Post scores up here if you forgot.
Fine. Momentary, while the Suns are ahead of the Spurs, 24 to 13, and we're moving right along.
Reminds me of ballpark days when they asked to pick the scores up.
All right. Okay. I am going to open a public hearing on case number 075000005, Amaranth Area 1, Phase 2 Preliminary Plat, and I will open the public hearing and request the staff presentation.
Commissioner Gelsner, members of the commission, the applicant is requesting preliminary plat approval to subdivide approximately 683 acres into 997 lots and 53 tracts. This is for the part of the original 690, which again is located here just north of State Route 238 to the west of the Maricopa-Pennell County line. The Amaranth Area 1 Final PAD was approved by council on March 26, 2007. This was a final PAD for this entire 690 acres. At that same council meeting, the Phase 1 Preliminary Plat was approved, which is the southern portion of the 690 acres. Tonight, we're looking at a preliminary plat for this Phase 2, which is the northwestern part of the property. This preliminary plat includes approximately 107 acres of parks and open space, which also includes a hillside area which is located in the eastern portion. There's also two school sites within both phases, one of those sites being located in Phase 2 on the southern portion here. The proposed preliminary plat for Amaranth Area 1, Phase 2, is consistent with the final planned area development and with the land use designations provided in the city's general plan. Staff recommends approval of this preliminary plat, and I can take any questions you might
Questions of staff? All right. I have a couple, since no one else does. If you go to the preliminary plat and look at Sheet 15 of 42 and Sheet 16 of 42, and I was looking for some other areas, my concern is, and I, my concern is these houses or these lots are backing up to slopes of land, and do we, can we get from the developer some type of footprint of where the building will be versus the elevation of the, versus, in other words, my concern is that when they come in and do mass grading, they're going to take away all the slope or build houses on slope. And I think we, on some of these plats, on some of these lots, we should, I don't want to restrict the developer or the home builder and say they can only build in a certain area, but I think we should look at the slope area and have some concerns and say, well, you can't build back here, your house has to be front-loaded or rear-loaded or whatever. And those are the two, those are the two sheets that really stood out with me. There's a couple of other sheets, but, you know, I'll just ask, you know, what your thoughts are, and then ask the developer what their thoughts are concerning this concern.
To answer your question, I believe we could ask the applicant to provide us with some kind of details of where the home could be located within the lot with a basic general footprint.
Mr. Chairman, in addition to that, in this particular case, you know, looking at the preliminary plat, the actual slopes on those lots, although they're working up to the hill, are very shallow. They're, you know, it's one-foot contours. It appears a little bit more exaggerated than I believe it is, but I believe the concept is correct, and we will work further with the applicant, you know, to evaluate that, to make sure that we're providing building envelopes that aren't going to be destruction of the hillside.
Okay. I was concerned, because I, actually, when I was looking at these plans, I wasn't able to get the detail of the contour, how many feet between each contour line. Now that you've told me that, I have a little bit less concern concerning that. However, on, you know, again, on hilly ground, and I'll just forewarn some other people that this will come up a second later tonight, that we're going to be, you know, I would like to see some type of, you know, basically, you can build the house here, but you can't build it in the back, and some sort of, you know, not a total restriction, but a general idea of where we're going to place houses. Would you like to come up? And could you identify yourself, please?
My name is Tim Keenan. I'm at 6720 North Scottsdale Road in Scottsdale. Commissioner Gelsner and commission. That is probably the only topography on that 690, so that hill is very important to us. So we don't want to block the views of that hill any more than you're showing us, you're telling us tonight. We'd be glad to show you elevations, proposed elevations for those homes.
I don't need to be shown it. I just want you to work it out with staff.
Love to.
Before it goes to council.
Okay.
Because I think there, with the demise of the former hillside ordinance that never happened, I think this is an issue that may come up.
Okay.
And I think it would be to your behalf to have an answer ready for them.
Okay. And I just want to stress to you how important that topography was to us and this project.
Okay. Any other questions of staff? Any other, anybody from the public that would like to make presentation? Okay, then I'm going to close the public hearing. Is there any commission discussion? In that case, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve case 07500-00005 as read by the, as read by myself.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve case 075000005 as stated.
All right. I have a motion from Commissioner Loretano, second from Commissioner Miller. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or opposed? The ayes have it, 5-0.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Does anybody need to take a break? We're going to take five, we'll reconvene at 8:30. We're going to take five, we'll reconvene at 8:30. All the commission, regular commission meeting back to order, and we are going to hear case number 077000001, Luke compatible land use area minor general plan amendment. And I'm going to open the public hearing, and I'm going to ask for the staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. The applicant's requesting a minor amendments to the Goodyear general plan to amend the land use definition for the Luke compatible land use area. The Luke compatible land use area is generally located in the far northwestern area of the city, and currently allows light industrial and commercial uses, but also prohibiting office-type uses. Staff has discussed this issue with members of the general plan advisory committee, and has determined that the exclusion of commercial office developments was an error in the draft of the general plan. The general plan amendment, or this general plan amendment will amend the definition of the Luke compatible land use area, so that commercial office developments are no longer prohibitive. Staff is recommending approval of this request and is available along with the applicant for your questions.
Would the applicant, Mr. Ellingson, like to say anything? Other than hello?
Chairman Gelsner and members of the commission, hello. But we have done some research. I served on this, on this general plan commission, and I even went to the mayor who led this and tried to remember why this was put in, when it's within the statute that these uses are permissible. Checked with Luke again to make sure that these uses were okay with them. In trying to remember, I could not remember, don't know why it was put in, but it also offers a great buffer in terms of use for Luke in the short term and long term. And so, having done the research, going back, maybe you remember, but nobody else will remember, why it was put in, but it doesn't make sense in terms of aligning itself with compatible uses that Luke feels are appropriate within the area, so.
It was probably on meeting 21 at 11:30 at night, and I can't remember either.
So, when I went back, it just didn't make sense. And so, we're asking that the text amendment be made, so that these uses can be in compatibility with those same uses that are called out in the statute, and that Luke sees as being certainly within the scope of keeping the mission intact for them, so.
Mr. Lax?
Commissioner Lax? From my recollection of that, of that time, I think that it was sort of a movement, you know, restricted movement, because that's when, when they were really concerned about losing Luke, and I think it was just an overly cautious, you know, move at that time, to ensure that, you know, that there wasn't going to be any density. I don't know that, at least that's what I remember. But I think it was in one of those, you know, really long meetings towards the end. But I have, you know, but I have the objection to it now.
Any, any other, any other questions, Commissioner Bay?
I guess the only question I have, I mean, if it's just the day-night noise level, the 65 contour, I'm assuming that it go from 65 to 70. That's allowed for that, and when I look at the staff report that talks about noise levels all the way up to 80, I think that gets you pretty close to the crash zone. And so, I guess my concern is that if we say in the 65, we limit that up to the 70 DNL then, because if we then begin to have people working in that particular area, and it's closer to what I would consider a dangerous area, then there's a possibility of a crash, and then you have more people working in those areas, and then we have a real major catastrophe on our hands. So, so I'm fine with, with the noise level, but I would like to at least keep it to at least a 70 DNL, and that was, and that would be my concern, is public safety.
Can I comment?
Yes, of course.
When we, when we reviewed that with the Air Force, that was not their concern. Remember that with the accident potential zones, sometimes there are areas that are noisier that are not directly associated with the accident potential zones. So, the idea of noise and the idea of being adjacent in, in all cases next to the accident potential zone are not always, they're not always aligned that way. So, this gave, at least in terms of the use, an opportunity. You're going to have to do all the sound attenuation that's called out in these areas to make them compatible. But for the long term, I think sake for the development of the city in terms of opportunity to utilize lands that are in, in the influence of Luke, this was a good use, and they saw it that way, too. We've also talked to the current base commander, showed him the plans. He'll be seeing more of our plans. We're going to bring in the zoning case on this soon, in terms of all of the remaining lands for Palm Valley that are impacted by Luke, so.
I guess, you know, Mr. Ellingson, I guess the only thing, again, my concern is, I don't think I have any examples of that particular area in front of me, and so while we, you know, speak about relationship to the accident potential zone versus the daylight noise levels, I guess my concern is I would like to assure that it's, that we're not doing any construction in any potentially dangerous areas. Noise can be mitigated, but lives are hard to replace, so.
Don't, I don't disagree with that. And we've worked a long time. We've had a lot of take when it comes to the land use and what was compatible one time, and then redefined to another time. So, we're trying to keep very much everybody on the same page. We're trying to look at public safety and recognize that that's not only in our interest, Luke's interest, the city's interest, everybody's interest. I'm good with that, thank you.
Any other commission, questions of the applicant or staff? I have one or two. David, you mentioned that you polled a number of people on the general plan committee. I know I asked Commissioner Lax, I asked my, I didn't, never got asked. I don't know if Commissioner Bay got asked, but I was kind of wondering, okay, who did you ask?
Chairman Gelsner, members of the commission, we spoke with the mayor, as well as the applicant, Jay Ellingson.
Okay, that's fine, thank you. Next, next, next com-
Mr. Chairman, I also spoke with John Blomming and Kevin Cooper, who took the lead on it.
Okay, so we had our leaders, our leadership polled pretty well. Okay, the next question I have, and this kind of piggybacks on what Commissioner Bay has, I guess I'm going to ask the applicant. In future PADS, would you have any concern if staff inserted a sound attenuation stipulation in any type of office structures that were built in this area?
Commissioner Gelsner, I don't think it's necessary, if you would like to do that, because it's already in the area defined by Luke in terms of, by statute, that you have to do sound attenuation.
Okay. So, that answers my question. Any other, any other questions, public comments? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Any commission discussion? Okay, I'm going to ask for a motion for, what am I doing? Case number 07700001, Luke compatible land use area minor general plan amendment as read by, presented by staff.
Mr. Commissioner, I move that we approve number 070, 70000001 as presented.
I have a motion, can I have a second, please?
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Loretano, a second from Commissioner Lax. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, the ayes have it five-zero. Moving right along, we're, you're welcome. We have another case, case 072000001, a zoning ordinance text amendment to, by the city of Goodyear, to amend our parochial public and charter schools in any districts as a special use. And I'm going to open the public hearing and ask for the staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. This is a city-initiated zoning ordinance text amendment that would allow for the consideration of public, parochial, and charter schools in any zoning district as a special use. As indicated in your staff report, the city zoning ordinance currently provides that schools may only be considered in the agricultural and residential zoning districts, subject to the approval of a use permit. Compared to other Valley cities, staff found that the city of Goodyear zoning ordinance is quite restrictive in limiting schools to only the residential and agricultural districts, and also found this to be a barrier to schools that wish to locate in the city of Goodyear. As such, staff recommends that public, parochial, and charter schools be regulated as a special use, so that, so that they can be considered in any zoning district, subject to the special use permit criteria contained within Article IV of the zoning ordinance. This concludes my presentation. Staff is available for your questions.
Questions of staff?
Commissioner Bay? I'm just, I'm going to just throw this out here. There are some restrictions about the types of businesses that can be licensed in a certain distance from a school. And, and so with the allowance of schools to be then now defined or given special use in any zoning, are there going to be some requirements that we assure that these, these applications do not fall within areas that conversely would be negative if, if the business wanted to be near the schools?
Chairman Gelsner, Commissioner Bay, during the researching, or during the process of staff studying this zoning ordinance text amendment, we searched through our existing zoning ordinance to determine what those standards are in terms of distance separation requirements. And currently, there are distance separation requirements that would apply to tattoo and body piercing type establishments, as well as adult business-type uses. And so, those already exist, and with this zoning ordinance amendment, those distance separation requirements would still apply.
Okay, now, but the separation requirements are for those types of businesses, but not for the schools. So, I guess, are we going to include that they cannot locate themselves within that radius, that same radius?
Chairman Gelsner, Commissioner Bay, that's already contained within the zoning ordinance, these types of distant separations, distant separation requirements between schools and adult-type businesses and tattoo establishments, body piercings, et cetera.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Bay, maybe assist on that one. I, I think where you're going with is, is that if there are existing uses out there that require a separation from a school or church, like liquor licenses, as I recall, things that maybe we don't regulate, but require separation by other ordinances, what happens when a school comes in and wants to locate as, and is closer than what the ordinance or statute requires? I guess my answer to that one, it does create particular difficulties, maybe more so for that existing use, but the thing to remind me here, this is all by special use permit. This commission and city council reviews every one of them. Part of that valuation is if you're proposing a school, charter school, other school within a shopping center that's in proximity to a lounge or cocktail lounge, part of the evaluation is maybe that's not the appropriate location.
Okay, so that, that would be evaluated long before, would be brought before the commission or the council?
It would be brought, it would be evaluated as part of that process, first by staff, advising them that this is probably not a good location for it, and that would be an issue in the consideration of these permit. Of course, then it's by the commission and the council to reemphasize that and make the decision.
That'd be fine, because I don't want to put those existing businesses at a disadvantage, because once they're located, now suddenly people begin to complain because those businesses exist there.
I agree.
Okay, well, thank you very much, that's, that's satisfactory.
Any other questions of staff? I have one. Do we have a definition for what a school is? And where I'm going with this is especially, how would we, how, preschool, how would we, what would we consider a daycare center or a preschool, and those, those uses often get mixed together? And would they be covered by this text amendment?
Chairman Gelsner, members of the commission, preschools and daycares would fall outside of this zoning ordinance text amendment.
So, so the definition of a school, in essence, is K through 12, or high, or higher? Or K through 12, whatever they're-
We do have a definition of school in our zoning ordinance. So, it says private or public places of general instruction, not nursery schools, dancing schools, writing canaries, or trade or specialized vocational schools. And then within our zoning ordinance, if you look in the commercial uses section, you'll see that daycares are listed in the permitted uses.
Are listed in the permitted?
Permitted uses, right, in the general commercial district.
Okay.
You'll also find it, I believe is a special use if you have between seven and 10 kids in a residential zoning district. Less than seven kids, I believe, you don't need any type of use permit.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions of staff? And since the city is the applicant, I guess you're, you're the applicant, too. Any other questions of the applicant? Okay, in that case, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for commission discussion. Is there any discussion? Okay, moving right along, I'm looking for a motion to approve case number 07200-00001, zoning ordinance text amendment, considering public schools. So moved. And I have a motion from Commissioner Bay, and I'll take a second to agree from Commissioner Miller. And if there's no discussion, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it five-zero. Thank you. Okay, our last case, I believe, of the evening. The score, 40 to 24? Score is 40 to 24. Sun's ahead. Okay, the last case of the evening is case number 075000002, Straya Mountain Ranch, parcel 5.2, preliminary plat. I'm going to open the public hearing and ask for the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, and I guess for the record, it looks like they're within 11 now. So, just got an update a few seconds ago.
Okay, well, let me, I'll begin by orienting you with the site.
What you're looking at here is a Straya Mountain Ranch Phase 1. It's a rather dated aerial photograph here on the overhead, but for purposes of orienting you with the site, I think it serves its purpose. Parcel 5.2 is located as such here. It's about a third of a mile south of San Miguel Drive, which is completed to its ultimate plan. And West Star, the West Star Drive alignment, I should say, is also included with this preliminary plat submittal. The balance of it is, I mentioned that real briefly, but I wanted to further clarify that for you, because currently, West Star Drive is completed up to about Lum Wash here. It kind of follows this path as such. And this is Lum Wash, if you look at the aerial. And what's included with this preliminary plat is the balance of West Star Drive between Lum Wash and San Miguel Drive. That's about three-quarters of a mile in my estimation. And parcel 5.2, which as you said is about 43 acres, is located west of the proposed West Star Drive alignment. Now, if I can go on to the actual parcel itself, five point two, and I'll just refer to sheet four of the preliminary plat submittal, which I think pretty well encapsulates the parcel and how it's being subdivided. The proposal is to subdivide this parcel into seventeen single-family detached lots, there will be custom homesites and four tracts. Directly to the south, west and north are permanent open space areas. And to the east, of course, is West Star Drive and future phases of Gulf Village. The site is currently zoned, the underlying zoning, I should say, is calls for low-density residential, which is two to four dwellings to the acre. And the general plan, I beg your pardon, that was a general plan designation, the underlying zoning is, calls for medium-low density, which is one to two. What they're proposing here is four-tenths dwellings to the acre. So it's well below those limitations. And thirty-five percent of this site will be, will be open space, will be maintained as open space. The lots will be generally pretty large, but they range anywhere between twenty-six, about twenty-six thousand square feet to about a hundred and twenty thousand square feet. The staff is recommending approval contingent on those fifteen rather boilerplate stipulations. And with that, I'll conclude my comments and open it up to any questions you might have. The applicant is here as well.
Commissioner Bay.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Just like to get a point of clarification, tracts A, B, C and D are not intended to be constructed upon, is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Gelsner, that is staff's understanding.
And then?
Now, if you, by constructed upon, you mean graded?
Well, there's no homes that will be built on those tracks. Those are typically, the track is for open space drainage and things of that nature. So my assumption is that those tracks will not have any home construction.
No home construction, there may be a possibility of remadas or to enhance the open space, but homes will be out of the picture for those four tracks.
And I guess the, there's some concern about, I would say, track twelve, eleven, twelve and thirteen, which I'm not really sure about these contours, I'm not sure if they're one foot, five foot, whatever. But it looks like we're actually going to begin to cut into the mountainside to construct those particular, particular homes. I guess my concern is, is what is the slope per foot on that? And do those tracks meet the current city mountainside requirements?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Gelsner, I'm gonna try to clarify it. First of all, I believe the contours that are here are ten-foot contours?
Ten-foot?
Well, if I'm not mistaken? Or? I would hope not, not any more than that.
They're ten-foot. They're ten-foot contour lines.
Yeah, they're ten-foot contour lines.
So...
Now, you will notice that there are, the dash lines that you see just within the lot lines, those are building setback lines as per the zoning requirements. The zoning for this area calls for twenty-foot front, building setback, twenty-foot rear and ten feet on each side. I've asked the applicant to include that on this map to clarify, especially with some of the more irregularly shaped lots, you know, where exactly is the front lot line? And when we get a building permit for a custom home come in, you know, that will, we will know that well before an application does come in for a building permit. With regard to the development area, I believe, and the applicant can further clarify this, but the building envelopes that Estrella Mountain Ranch applies to these lots are further, are more restrictive than the building setback lines that you see here. There's only so much disturbed area allowed, and that includes not only building footprint, but also concrete for driveways, walkways, so forth. With regard to the slope requirements, I believe the subdivision regulations would not allow any building construction on any areas where the slope is greater than twenty percent.
Well, it's, excuse me, let me elaborate a little.
Sure.
Because I don't have the length of these lots, it's hard to discern what the slope's gonna be, but if I'm looking at lot thirteen, and these are ten-foot contours, that's a hundred and sixty feet, and whatever that distance is from the proposed drainage easement. So in order to maintain a twenty-foot slope, that's gonna be tough, unless those are really, really long lots. So maybe some clarification, and maybe that's a question for the applicant.
Yeah, Commissioner Bay, that may be something for the applicant to further clarify, but I can't quite make out the length of the depth of these lots, but they are, they are pretty long.
Okay. Commissioner Loretano?
Just to clarify, these are not gonna be pre-graded, they're for custom homes, and each one, you're gonna approve each house for each individual lot as they're, the city does, right? So they're not pre-graded, they're sold as all, you're nodding.
Right. The lots will not be pre-graded, however, I believe if you look at the grading plan, and this is sheet seven, that kind of gives you an idea of how the landings are gonna be graded for the roads.
And that might help Commissioner Bay out, because my understanding is that they'll come with plans for that specific lot and that specific envelope and bring those to the city, and they'll get approved with whatever their architect will, can work with the city on each lot and what contours that specific lot and building will allow. So it's not like the other one where they're all separate.
Okay. Any other questions of staff? All right, let me, I'll ask my question, but it's probably, it piggybacks on Commissioner Bay, but I understand that the applicant provided you with a more restrictive, what I would call a building envelope area plan for this area? And if that's the case, I would strongly recommend that that be presented when this goes forward to council, assuming that it gets passed tonight. And I'll leave that question, because I really want, I would rather ask the applicant. If there's no more questions of staff, I invite the applicant to come up and identify themselves and make a presentation, or we have questions for you.
Chairman Gelsner, members of the planning commission, my name is Phil Luna, representing Newland Communities. I'm here tonight, I'm joined by Pete Tyke of Newland and Chuck Kader of Huntsaker and Associates, our land planner. And this has been presented to you, these are very large lots. Our planners and members of Newland have been out and walked these lots, we will continue to walk them, make sure that we get building envelopes set in the right spots, so that, the right spot for the lots to be there. We will be looking for homes to step to meet some of this grade that is involved here, but we'll try to keep the building envelopes, or we will keep the building envelopes to the areas with the least amount of slope on them.
If we, do you think, if we asked you to provide a, say, twelve to fifteen thousand square foot building envelope for each lot, do you find, would that be something that you would find to be an onerous condition before you came before city council? And the reason I say twelve to fifteen thousand is because a high-end home is gonna be six or seven thousand square feet, and we wanna be able, you know, you wanna be able to put it in the right spot. But my concern is, is along with Newland Communities, I don't wanna see Mulholland Drive here in Goodyear with, you know, steel beams coming out and people parking underneath, underneath their houses, and everything overhangs because the land is that precious. So I'm asking you, you know, what can you do to provide some, a little bit more surety than just the setback lines that we have here?
Well, you know, as far as the total square footage that you're asking for, for the building envelope, I'm not quite sure what that needs to be. These are very large lots that we're talking about, there could be some areas on some of these lots that are quite large, that do not get into severe slopes. But we would definitely be putting building envelopes on there, I just don't know what those areas need.
No, I understand, I mean, if there's a lot of a hundred and twenty thousand square feet, somebody's gonna wanna build a guest house.
Exactly, exactly.
And a pool and everything else.
But I think what you're asking is that we need to provide something to show where certain improvements can be constructed that would protect these slopes.
Correct. And if you wanna provide an overlay for, you know, sheet seven of eight before you go to council, I would strongly recommend it. Because page seven is your grading plan, you know, is one of your grading plans, and probably that's the most inclusive of the lotage. And if you had an overlay, I think that would convince several of the members of council who've been around long enough to remember the hillside ordinance and its demise, so that we, you know, there was some assurance of, this is where the house is gonna go, and we're not gonna scrape out the hill so we can build this. Do you wanna make a comment?
Yes.
Please identify yourself for the record.
Good evening, Chairman Gelsner and planning commissioners, my name is Chuck Kader, I'm with Huntsaker and Associates at sixteen sixty-one East Camelback. We actually, the location of Windriff Drive was set, it's basically a valley, and we took the road, we kind of centered it, moved it around so that we could maximize the usable pad area on the low-lying areas. Again, the city requires that we stay out of twenty percent slopes, and again, Newland is even more strict than that, at fifteen percent. We actually did a test plot for our benefit, just to make sure that each lot would work, and also for Newland's benefit, but we did not include it in the submittal. If Newland wished to, we could, and I believe we actually targeted ten thousand square foot pads. Again, the reasons for not including it, though, is that we don't, we did not wanna, these were flat pads, we did not wanna stifle anyone's creativity, and our hope is that they will step foundations and build into the hillsides and not create huge flat pads.
Okay. You know, again, I don't have any problems going, you know, stepping into the hillside, you know, what I think my heartburn would be, and I think, I don't wanna speak totally for council, but I, but again, you know, Mulholland Drive in LA is not what we're looking for. And, you know, we encourage this kind of development. This is, this is great stuff, because the people can afford this, are the kind of people we want living in Goodyear.
Absolutely.
So I encourage you to bring some kind of overlay to show council when this goes forward. Yes, please.
Chairman Gelsner, members of the planning commission, I want you to understand, we have, through our homeowners association and through Newland, very strict design standards that would be required. We will be looking at these lots very hard and making sure the appearance looks right here for this site, as well as the design review that will be going through the city. So we understand exactly what you're saying, these are concerns that we have also. We think this is a, you know, a beautiful area up there, it's a great lot for this type of development, but we understand your concern, and we will try to protect the slopes.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Loretano?
I really, I'm one of your residents up there, and I really do like this, I like that you're bringing more custom homes and homesites in there, and I like how they have done the step up in the retreat and in the summit up in that area, some of the houses. My only question is, as we're still getting stuff from you guys, when are we gonna see some commercial grocery store up there? I know that's gonna be one of the questions that council will ask.
To answer your question, we have entered an agreement with a commercial developer, and we're hoping to close on this property the end of this month. We'll be coming in, we're already working with a grocery store chain, we cannot mention that, we haven't got one signed up yet, and, but hopefully soon, we will have that. But our intent is to get this grocery-anchored retail center in as quickly as possible. We'd like to say it would be in tomorrow, but we have to go through the site planning process, and, you know, and that will be something that will be looked at. We're pretty excited about the center, and we're looking at a lot of sustainable designs to go into this center, and so the planning is going to take a little longer in some cases, but we're as excited about it as most of the homeowners at Estrella. However, there are a few that would say, ah, we don't mind going seven or eight miles to get our groceries, but it will be coming soon.
Okay.
We'll be closing on this, we don't own the property right now where the grocery store is going, but we will close on it at the end of this month.
That is something I think you also might wanna bring up, because I know that's one of the concerns, has been there's no commercial, and we keep approving housing, even though it's like ten people, I don't think it's gonna make that big of a difference.
Any other, any other questions of staff or the applicant? In that case, I am going to...
Mr. Chairman?
Who, what? Oh, sorry.
Maybe before you close the hearing on it, from staff's perspective, staff would recommend that you consider a stipulation.
Thank you.
Be added to the preliminary plat, that prior to this application, preliminary plat application, go to the city council, that the applicant work with staff to provide restrictive building envelopes in each lot, or work with staff to develop detailed grading and development standards that would be attached to this preliminary plat, that would guide the individual grading for house pads on these lots to respect the hillside.
Let me ask the applicant, which would you prefer? That was an or question, I think, right?
Either or?
I think it was an either or.
It was an either or, that we will work with the applicant prior to going to council to develop a means, I think to do what we're all saying we wanna have done. So that or standards and some clear indication when this goes to council, how that each of the lots is gonna be handled relative to the slope and the future building pads.
Are you, can I get your assurance that you will work with staff and this stipulation will be added?
We will work with staff, that, you know, as I say, is just kind of...
I understand the wording needs to be massaged.
Okay, a concern, because as we have individual buyers of these lots and their architects, I don't wanna take away some of their creativity of how they might make it work on these lots, a certain design for a home, which at that time, we would definitely work with staff to make sure it is approved and not damaging the slope that's there.
Mr. Chairman, you know, one method to do that might be just, as we work with the applicant prior to going to council, a stipulation that each lot have an individual grading and drainage plan that's submitted to staff for review and approval.
Is that okay? Is that okay with you? That's okay, is that okay with, is that okay with the rest of the commission?
Yeah, we're gonna include that stipulation.
We're gonna add stipulation sixteen, that will discuss the individual grading plan of each lot before it gets to council. Is that okay?
That is okay, because we'll be as concerned about it as the city will.
All right.
But, Mr. Chairman, we also need, in addition to the grading drainage plan for each, for each individual lot, but actual standards to guide us in terms of site location for the house, in terms of cut and fill, how much cut and fill, and what the slope's gonna be on the house, what's gonna look like after the, after the fact. The developer will sell these lots to individuals, and they'll, will be dealing with architects and the owners individually on each one of these lots, and they'll all, may have, while the developer wants flexibility... the developer wants flexibility, the city needs some standards to judge each individual applicant in terms of development by. Of course, the HOA will look at it from their standpoint, but we need some guidance, so that's why we'd like the drainage, grading and drainage plan, which would have been required anyways without, since the site's not really masqueraded, but also some standards that we'd like to develop.
And the standards are to define...
Well, define cut and fill requirements, how much, what the slope, what the end product could be. My recollection on Estrella Mountain Ranch, and Phil, correct me if I'm wrong, is that there was a limitation on 20% on the PAD.
I thought they said 15.
I believe the, the original PAD for Estrella Mountain Ranch, at least for Phase One, was 20%. I'm positive of that. I don't know whether that's carried over to, so, but looking, we get a rough, we're doing some rough estimates here, they can exceed 20% on some of these lots.
Mm-hmm.
Easily.
Mm-hmm.
And we, we need some guidance, like, are we going to put a cap to that? So are we going to cap it at 20% or not?
Okay. I thought, I thought our zoning, I thought their standards and our zoning caps it at 20%.
No, when we adopted their original PAD many, many years ago, it was part of the PAD we did, I mean, back in those days in the 80s, there was like two or three stipulations for 20,000 acres, so there's nothing there to go by in terms of guidance for the staff. So we have to go to the documents, so we go to this big document they had when they adopted the PAD for Estrella Mountain Ranch. And in there, it talks about 20% as a cap that they've imposed. But over and above that, they have standards that they use to guide development, too, that we are not privy to.
Okay. So do you want a 17th stipulation that says that standards are going to be developed, and that before they get to council?
Yes.
Okay. Can you...
What was it, should we repeat 117?
It was really just standards for cut and fill.
I think you are going to work, you are going to develop stand, you are going, in conjunction with staff, you will develop standards for each individual lot, so concerning cut and fill and maximum slope of the house, so we don't get a house on stilts.
Okay.
Even though it's creative and wonderful. Is that, are we okay?
Yes.
Are you okay?
Well, yeah, I'm okay. I was...
I'm just trying to make sure that we have the right language, because I'm not going to be able to repeat this verbatim.
I'm okay, yes, I'm okay.
All right, may I close the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any, is there any commission discussion concerning this? We are going to add two stipulations, one, 16 concerning grading plan, and 17 concerning standards for grades and housing envelopes. In that case, I would ask for a motion to approve case 07500002, Estrella Mountain Ranch, parcel 5.2 preliminary plat.
Chairman Gelsner, I would like to make a motion to approve case 07500002, and include stipulation 16, which is to assure that there are grading and drainage plans for each lot, and a stipulation 17, that is a requirement for standards that define cut and fill for each individual lots.
And slope.
I have a, I have a motion, can I get a second, please? I have a, I have a motion from Commissioner Bay, a second for Commissioner Lott. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it, five zero.
We're done with the score.
We're done. We have 46 to 42. Okay, let me sit for a while, so I figured it was bad. Wait, 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 wait. Are there any staff communications before we adjourn? Yes, there are.
If everyone is in attendance at our June 20 meeting, we'll take a group photo.
Wear a tie, or wear a nice, good year shirt.
Otherwise, no suns.
Okay. And on that note...
And spray for the sun.
That was pretty good on the tie. I told my wife...